Kelly, are you on board?
Yes, sir. Feel free to start whenever you're ready.
All right. I got 6:30. Let's go ahead and kick our meeting off. What do you say?
Mayor, I think you're muted. If you're talking, I think you're muted.
Can you hear me now? I'm not talking.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I'm just waiting. I'm ready to go. Is anybody, we all ready to go?
Yeah, let's kick it off.
Let's kick it off.
Okay, and then I guess I'll go ahead and introduce the topic Water Treatment Plan Expansion Project Discussion. Mr. Meyer and team, I believe you're ready to go. Feel free to take the reins.
Yeah, thank you, Kelly. This is Dave Meyer, Public Works Staff Engineer. One small change in the agenda. We wanted to mention to you, we were going to present the wastewater treatment plant, current status on the expansion and also the wastewater treatment plant. Since the wastewater treatment plant is a shorter presentation, if it's okay with the board, we'd like to present that one first and then do the water treatment plant after.
Fine with me.
Okay, so assuming that's okay. We have two presentations this evening. First, a brief update on our wastewater treatment plant master plan. And second, the presentation on where we're at at the water treatment plant expansion. So both presentations will be headed up by Jacobs, the consulting engineer, who we hired for the master plan and for the independent review of our water treatment plant that was finalized in April of this year. So tonight's water treatment plant presentation will start with a brief recap of the findings that Jacobs presented in their Indy report, which was presented to the board on May 26, along with some other points that we'll be covering tonight, including a summary of next steps, preliminary schedule, and some design scope items. For our wastewater treatment plant, as a reminder, we have Jacobs working on the master plan for our wastewater treatment plant, as well as our sewer collection system. We initiated that project last year around August, and Jacobs has been making great progress on that, working very closely with staff and all of the plant operators throughout the process. For the collection system, we have completed the initial hydraulic modeling work and examined capacities of our main trunk lines. And so far, the results are promising with regards to current and future capacities. But that will still need to be finalized after we complete our flow monitoring. Our system flows was scheduled for completion at the end of this month, then at which point Jacobs will further calibrate the model and work towards making recommendations of the collection system. On the wastewater treatment plant side of things, very similar to what's occurring in our water treatment plant, we are bumping up on capacity issues. Because of this, after some discussions with town staff, Jacobs accelerated the master planning process for the plant ahead of the collection system, with the idea behind that, that we can move into the wastewater treatment plant design much sooner. So deliverables for the master plan will include two separate documents, one for the collection system and one for the plant. The wastewater treatment plant master plan draft, by the way, is expected to be delivered later this month. We anticipate the draft report on the collection system to be received in September. So before I turn over the mic to the Jacobs team, I'd like to reiterate the fact that along with our water treatment plant capacity issues that you all heard about last Tuesday, we are also up against capacity issues at our wastewater treatment plant. So our wastewater treatment plant is falling right in the heels of our water treatment plant. The expansion to the wastewater plant is just as critical. In terms of the schedule for the next few years, we are probably looking at designing construction to both of our plants simultaneously, you know, to accommodate the wastewater plant's expansion design and construction schedule. We definitely need to keep the ball rolling on this and hopefully initiate design on the wastewater plant this year. So with that, we have a number of Jacob's staffs online right now for this work session. And this time, I'd like to reintroduce Jacobs' project manager, Richard Saxton, who's been leading up all of the above. So if the moderator can please unmute Mr. Saxton if he hasn't done it already. Richard, the wastewater treatment floor is all yours, and I'll get the slideshow started here.
Thank you, Dave. It's a good introduction. I'll give you a second to pull up the slides.
Yep.
By way of introductions on the phone and people that'll probably contribute to some of the conversation from Jacobs today, we have Al Pickett and Bill Carter. There we go. Both Al and I are in the Loveland office, and Bill's in Denver. There's a lot of work on water and wastewater plants, but primarily for this conversation, focusing in on the water treatment specialties. So again, as David said, we have two items to cover, and I'll try to get through the wastewater plant in about five minutes and the water plant in about 15 if we can. So there is the wastewater plant. Again, what have we done to date? We have reviewed all the plant data. We've done a lot of model analysis, a lot of engineering and thinking. We have found, as Dave said, that the treatment plant is in need of expansion pretty quickly. And the limiting factor is the biological load to the plant, also than the flow rate. So we'll talk about that in a minute. And in progress, we have drafting of the master plan and finishing off the alternatives analysis for what might be the best way to go forward. Now, I think you're used to seeing some of Dave's graphs on the water plant. I wanted to show you one for the wastewater. So if you bear with me for a minute, the very squiggly black line in the bottom left corner, that represents a 30-day rolling average of the load, the biological load to the wastewater plant. You can see that from about 2017 to present. And the three different line types there, the dotted line represents 80% of plant capacity. The dashed line would be 95%, and the solid line is what the state has got your plant rated for as a max month capacity. Typically, you look at solids loading on a 30-day basis because it's kind of the, there's a lot of solids, a lot of load in the plants, and you don't worry so much about the daily peaks. You're looking more at the average over about a 30-day period. So everything in purple there reflects the existing wastewater plant capacity. So you can see there that that black 30-day line is bumping right up into the 95-ish, 95-plus zone there. Looking forward, the green curve is if we're growing at 6%, which is a number that we've been using throughout here, then the next expansion, as presently conceived of in the master plan, will get you up to the blue. So you can see that would carry you out for a number of years, probably out to 2020, 2033 or so. So those are the highlights to show you where we're at right now. We are pushing up against those limits. And as a footnote there in that sort of pink box, the health environment generally requires that by the time you hit 80% capacity, you should be in design, which is being considered, I think at this point in time, to be these conceptual master plan phase designs. And then you're supposed to be in construction, turning over dirt by the time you get to 95, so it's imminent. The next slide, Dave, shows a little further into the future there. The green was the original plant, before it got expanded to the purple phase a number of years ago. And then the blue would be the next expansion, and the gray would be kind of the future ultimate build-out expansion that is anticipated at this plant site, based on the 35,000-ish population that has been talked about, I think, in most of the planning to date. And that green dotted line there represents that same 6% curve to give you an idea of, you know, the stepwise approach that you follow in a plant. So what are the questions on the next slide perhaps, Dave, that we always look at when we look at a plant expansion is, can you build all of your planned phases on the site that you have? Or should you be looking elsewhere before you invest a lot of money in the present site? And in a nutshell, this represents about everything we can imagine you may need on the site. And, you know, it's pushing up against the perimeter of your property line for sure. Basically, the edge of field, there you go, Dave, that kind of represents your present property boundary. More space is always handy, but we feel like you can just about shoehorn it into this site, which is good news. Again, purple represents existing. The teal light blue color would be what would be built in the next expansion. Some of those facilities being sized to accommodate the future growth. For example, the headworks there that lifts all of the wastewater up into the plant elevation and screens it and degrits it. It makes sense to build that facility, at least the concrete, big enough to handle the future. So there is a little bit of extra expense, if you like, investment in the next expansion to set you up for the steps into the future. Then gray would be the last one that we've depicted. And if for some reason, thinking well ahead, if for some reason, at that point in time, the purple existing round elliptical oval there and other things didn't make sense to keep two different technologies, then the light red colors are what you would need to build to replace the process capability of the purple, basically. So we've taken a pretty good thorough look at this and feel pretty good about it. So that was all I had at this point in time on the wastewater plant, unless anybody has any questions. Anyone?
Tim Weynast here. Yeah, thank you for this presentation. I didn't realize we were at this point already. This should be an interesting next couple, few years, I guess.
I think that's a good way to put it.
Well, we're pretty fortunate to have this ground.
Yes.
Well, that's good news.
Yep.
Can I ask a quick question? So do we own the property for the expansion, where the expansion will be going? Is that currently town property?
Yes, you own everything that we've sort of encumbered here. Again, more space is always helpful, but you do own what we've filled up here. Yes.
John, you got something to say?
Yeah, I did. What are we likely to see as the impact of, obviously, we're looking at, I think it was, you're looking three years or so until we're able to get that out of mind. What kind of an impact are we looking on happening, other than issues potentially with state for being running at that close to capacity?
It's a good question. Something that we are looking into as we do this high-level master plan as well is, most likely because the hydraulic capacity, you know, you can push enough liquid through the plant, we think, for the next couple of years, hopefully, depending how things shake out. But the solids handling basically requires help. So the aeration basin, that's that bigger circle, purple circle in the middle there, possibly supplemental oxygen into there may help. And a few other things that we may do that, again, we need to flesh out really in a kind of a next steps analysis for this plant, to be quite frank. But it's a good question, and yes, there probably will need to be some things done to keep it going.
Mr. Meyer, I've distinguished board, if I may add something, Michael Crowell here from the wastewater plant. The state is aware that we are under an initial phase of design. The upside is we're mandated to remove 85% of all pollutants, and we've been continuing to run between 97 and 98% removal. So I think the state's going to be willing to work with us. Jacobs had listed three team members, when in fact, they've got probably eight or nine team members working on this. And I'm really happy with what they've shown us so far.
Well, Mike, you've sent out notices to the state already. Have they responded to you on anything? Are we good?
Yeah, you're right, Mr. I have, and no, they haven't said a word. No news is good news as far as I'm concerned.
How often do we have to do that?
You know, we sent out a monthly discharge monitoring report, and I continue to reiterate that we are under phase one of design, which where we need to be. So I think we're comfortable there.
Good deal, good deal. This is good. I'm pleased to see it rolling.
Yeah, thank you.
You bet. Thank you, sir.
And I think Richard and Jacob's team has been doing a phenomenal job with this.
No, I have to agree. Any other trustees want to chime in on this? I mean, this is just very preliminary. We're on our way, so. There's nothing else to say. I'd like to let Richard move on to the water treatment plant.
Okay, thank you. Yep, so we'll switch gears to the water plant. Brief outline of what I plan to cover here. Very, very quick, one-page recap of the independent review presentation, where we'll focus really on the benefits and the merits to looking at an alternate direction. A quick summary of the next steps that we see that need to be followed through and decisions to be made probably. A discussion on plant expansion schedule and sort of best case, worst case, realistic case, ideas of what to expect in the schedule. And then we have just an introduction to what would likely be the scope items to be covered in the engineering side of things to get you through plant startup. I'm going to have, sorry, Bill is going to jump in and talk about a couple of slides, and then Al will talk about schedule, and I'll pick it up at the end.
Okay, thanks, Richard. My name is Bill Carter. I'm with Jacobs. We were challenged with reviewing the design that was already underway and offering alternatives to improve the constructability, the long-term operability, be more cost-effective in the long term for the town. So we've come up with an alternative design that improves constructability by allowing the plant to continue to operate all the way through construction. We're using processes that the existing staff is accustomed to using, as opposed to changing over to a whole new treatment technology. We've simplified the ozone system. Really, that's required to make sure you get water that is free from taste and odors. It tastes and smells good, smells good, as opposed to using that for disinfection. Mechanical solids dewatering, a wise man told me that it's tough to be in the water business in Colorado. You know, we get spring runoff, we get hot summers. The only break we get is 300 days of sunshine, so we're going to use that for dewatering the solids. That's easier, it's less staff-intensive, it's cleaner. You end up actually with a drier solids, so you're not hauling as much water to final disposal. That contributes to reduced costs, both from a capital standpoint and year-after-year O&amp;M costs. As I mentioned before, the ozone will be there for removing taste and odor. You've got a fair amount of geosmin that's seasonally present in your water. That's one of the kind of traditional odor compounds. So the ozone will take care of that. And maybe most importantly, looking ahead at your long-term water portfolio, this process design that we've presented is going to offer you flexibility to treat whatever your source water is for the long term.
So that's a good point. Real quick, before you move on, you can actually get another water source, other than the lake that we currently have, and treat it at this plant.
That's the intent. So the process that we've laid out, Flock said ozone, biological filters, that is a robust process that should take pretty much any surface water that you would want to treat there.
Okay.
So next steps, these start out with kind of board activities or policy directions, and then take us all the way to the finish line. So three or four years worth of stuff here in six bullet points. So the town's at a point, I think, where you're faced with, do you want to move forward with the design that was started by, we'll call it STANTEC design or the alternate design, call that a Jacobs design? Move ahead with one of those options. If you want to proceed with the alternate, initiate design. And I think Al's going to talk to the schedule, but that's sort of a hot burn, if, just in terms of getting the capacity in time to when you need it. Consider ways to meet your current demands, either with interim capacity improvements or through demand management, which I think might be on the agenda a little bit tonight. That's really just a policy decision where the town leaders need to tell the utilities and the engineers what the target is. We'll get the agency approvals for interim and permanent construction elements at the plant. Do that construction and get it started up. So that's a couple of years and a couple of bullets, and I think Al's going to talk to that in a little bit more detail.
Thanks, Bill, and thank you, thank you, board, for having us. Regarding the plant expansion schedule, one of the main drivers, not including the high demands, is completion by May of 2025. You are currently under a CDPHE compliance schedule to have that work done. Some of that work is triggered by your solids decant return and discharge permit and related to the whole effluent toxicity permit requirement that you have, or the wet test, as it's referred to. So that is the latest that this project can be completed by. As a probable expansion schedule, we think the spring of 2024 would be a likely completion of this project, I think, under normal circumstances. We are looking at also recommending an aggressive or more optimistic schedule that would try to complete the design and construction by the summer of 2023. While we think that may be achievable, it's going to depend on a lot of factors and probably require accelerated design activities, expedited town and CMAR contract reviews and decisions to keep to the schedule, accelerated CDPHE approvals, some early design packages, and probably the procurement of long-lead equipment, lead item equipment, like the ozone facilities, which, you know, some of that equipment, we've been told, it's about a year out after you approve shop drawings to get to your site. And so that would be a goal, I think, to try go for the 2023. But things have to align, I think, for that aggressive schedule to hit. And obviously, we have a CMAR, or we're proposing a CMAR approach to this. So, you know, the contractor is going to have to weigh in on the schedule. So at this point, this is the engineer's schedule that we've come up with, but we really have to add the contractor's input to make sure this is a realistic and achievable item. So that's kind of it where we are in our recommendations of how fast the project can be implemented as proposed for the alternative design.
Thanks, Al. This is the last slide that we have, but what would a scope of services look like? Basically, that's what we've outlined here. The project management is kind of standard, having to deal with the agencies is standard. And then bullet number three there, there's 10% design. I think because there are a lot of things that are very important to make sure that they set the stage for the rest of the high-production work, if you like. The 3.2, it's like a mini master plan in a way, but what is the plan for how would we accommodate build-out capacity at the site? So like we showed you at the wastewater plant, we have a plan. Things can change, but there's a concept there for how you would get all the way to your approximately 35,000 population. If we needed to achieve that at this water plant site, how would that look? Where's the elbow room to put new buildings, parallel trains? So a conversation about that, come up with a decision on what would the town like to see at this site? Because that influences the rest of the design. So get those decisions done early. 3.3, again, interim capacity improvement, anticipating that while you'll probably do a good job on trying to curb some of the water usage, having the ability to increase capacity on a temporary basis by modifying a few of the things you have out there now is probably something that would be of interest, and we'll be certainly pleased to help if that's the case. 3.4, value engineering. This is where we start to get into how can we benefit from the work that's been done in the past? So the previous design had some value engineering workshops, some ideas that were adopted, some that weren't, some lessons learned. And we want to make sure that, you know, we don't throw it all out the window and start from a clean slate. We want to capitalize on those, you know, the good things that have been learned to streamline things going forward. And then the other items, I think, probably makes some sense, making sure that everybody's on board with how you sequence the work, because that really influences the way the contractor is able to anticipate his schedule and costs, you know, which bit gets built first, and in the winter, and in the summer. And then planning those early packages. If we try to hit the very aggressive schedule, working with the CMAR contractor and the town, how can we best, you know, set the stage to win? And do the sort of the foundations site work type of improvements that potentially can be done prior to completing the design for, you know, the details inside the buildings. So that's a very, very important, I think, 10% step that really needs to be done pretty quickly. The schedule that Al described before anticipated an August 2020 start to all of this. So that's kind of what we were shooting for, and obviously, it depends on, you know, where the town would like to go. We then follow all of those decisions with fairly standard 30, 60, 90, 100% designs. The goal of giving us the middle to the state at 60% to get them to buy into things, to help us speed things up. And then I think the other things are self-explanatory there. So we would follow it all the way through construction and startup. So I believe that's all we have for slides. I'd be happy to entertain any ideas or questions people may have.
Hey, Bob, are you on the line? Bob Gowing, you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Have you had a look at the preliminary? You know, the, the, the area that they might need to do this expansion and how are we looking out there at our current site? Do we got enough room? What's going on?
We have taken an expansion request to the North Booter Board. It been approved already for 2.4 acres, which was based on, you know, the initial expansion. So in general, where we showed them a drawing that Jacobs prepared for us that showed that 2.4 acres pretty much straight west of the site. So the next step for that is to write up a legal description and attach that to an amendment to the North Booter contract. Pretty simple amendment, just saying we're expanding the, the least plant area from this to this.
Oh, good. So they're, they're, they're amendable to letting us do, go ahead with this expansion and we got enough room.
Correct.
That's good. Anyone else have questions for Richard or Bob on this?
I did have a few. This is John Gator and I appreciate this very good presentation, but one question that I feel needs to be asked is my understanding is we're kind of in this situation because we started at a point where we're at that 10% and everything looked like it was going to be good. And then that project, I want to say doubled in price and problems by the time we reached that 90% standpoint. And I guess my concern is, is how do we? I mean, it sounds great now. It's going to be less expensive to run. It's going to be less expensive in capital than the other plan, but we're still at that pre 10% design phase. So how do we know that if we do move forward with this, we're not going to wind up in the same boat where we end up at, again, getting that 60, 90%, we're now at double what we started at.
Maybe I can start with that one. That's a very good question. And we've had some conversations with the, with Hydro who's was there before. And, and some of the things which they said were very important and that were missing, quite frankly, from, from what they had to work with. So we will be focusing on making sure that those things like construction sequencing, what has to be built when, trying to reduce the amount of work in the existing facilities. So we're not going through this, what can be difficult to price, sort of rework areas. Making sure that we've identified the processes, the equipment and things. So fair question. We've done a lot of these C Mar type projects. And I think the goal is to really capitalize on that 10%, get all of the bugs into the open as best we can. And and yeah, just, just really have a very well thought out plan early, I guess is the best approach. Anybody else have any other thoughts?
I have a question. This is John Jerome. I guess my biggest question to be mentioned Hydro. Obviously you are doing what you're doing because the board had, didn't feel comfortable with what we were presented by the previous engineering firm. Hydro was part of that deal. Is there any possibility or I mean, is there? Are we stuck with Hydro or can we, is there a possibility of finding another con, general, or another contractor? Just as a, you know, I guess to find out. Keep them honest, I guess, would be the bottom line.
John, that's a, that's a good question. This is Bob. We've been bouncing some of this stuff off of Hydro just because of the amount of knowledge that they gained through the, through the stand tech version of their project. We do feel like Hydro did their part on that, you know, on the previous iteration of this. I think that the, the failings of that project were located elsewhere. Jacobs has quite a bit of experience working with Hydro, which I'll invite them to talk about here in a minute. But it seems a shame to lose the, the, the knowledge of the plant and the, also the appreciation of all the things that we went through. You recall that big value engineering list that we went through, you know, Hydro was working with us hand in hand during that whole time. So we are recommending that we stick with the C Mar process because we believe that it's the right process for this, the delivery process. But and also feel like Hydro is, is the best choice. Now, that's not saying that we won't be vetting those costs at some point. Perhaps with a third party review at some point, or at least that's our recommendation at this, this point in the project. We still have some time to make that decision as well. But Jim with Hydro has made himself available, so we've taken advantage of that.
Sure. No, and I get that. And I, I mean, obviously I'm pretty knowledgeable what has transpired over the past couple of years. And it was always the board's feeling that it wasn't necessarily, you know, the construction company that was causing the problem. It was, you know, the engineering firm at the time. So I just wanted, I had to ask the question, you know?
No, that's a good question. And Richard, maybe you could talk a little bit about some of the, the recent projects you've had with Hydro in particular.
And Al, you might be, I've, I've had some projects with Hydro. Actually have one at the moment and otherwise might have a little bit more dated. So I think, Al, you've got a good bit of experience on quite a few project.
Yeah, this is Al Paquette and I've been a project manager or participant in some recent projects with using C Mar or another alternative project delivery system. And we've done many projects with Hydro at the city of Fort Collins Water Treatment Plant. Most recently, a $12 million chlorine contact basin using a C Mar approach. That project did come in under, under budget. We are currently doing the South Fort Collins Sanitations District's wastewater treatment plant expansion under, under a C Mar. That project is approximately 75% complete. And we are projecting that we're going to come in under the engineering fee and we're projecting that we're going to be not using the contingency that we've been holding since the 10% design. So we've had a couple, I think, very recent successes, both with C Mar delivery and particularly with Hydro construction. And I think having some of the lessons learned from the prior project will really help guide us and inform us. So we don't kind of, we don't step in that again and get into some of those issues that we had. And I was pleased to see some of the feedback when we, when Jacobs presented the alternative design. Some of the things we had recommended regarding the solids and the keeping of the flock said basins really seemed to speak to both Hydro and interstates as eliminating some of the challenges and concerns they had. I'm sure we'll have some other concerns as we go through the design process. But, you know, at, at the current level, I think we're on the right track and believe that we're going to get to those calls, cost savings. Notwithstanding any market changes or inflations and other things that are happening, right? We're not in control of some of those other issues. But doing an apples to apples comparison between the stand text costs and our proposed costs. I, I think we're confident that ours, you know, will have the less capital and own, and certainly operations costs. And be less mechanical and labor intensive to operate. Does that answer your, your question?
Yes, yes, it does. Thank you. And I actually have just one more piece of that to throw in there. I just thought about. And I don't remember when this was brought up, but I believe I remember at one point Hydro informed us that they were not going to be available for a, a, a long amount of time to embark on this project when, I mean, this has been probably last year sometime. So have we been able, are they more available to work on this schedule, this, the ambitious schedule that has been proposed here? Or has that even been discussed with, with, with Hydro at all?
I could take that. This is Dave Meyer, trustee Jerome. That's a good question. And we have been talking with Jim Urich about his schedule. He is online right now if he wants to speak for that. But the answer is yes, he has indicated availability to start this project with respect to the schedules that we have been presenting you guys. Jim, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Dave. Yes, we, I've been in close communication with Dave and the Jacobs team. I guess I would, I would enforce what some of the Jacobs team have told you in that. I've got, or Hydro has anywhere between an 18 to 20 year relationship with many people on the Jacobs team. We understand, they understand how you deliver a project under the C Mar approach. A lot of the things that Bill Carter and and Richard Saxon and even Al Paquette were reinforcing is the fact that it's, it's really key upfront to figure out the schedule. And we need to work with plant staff to do that because that's going to be the driving element to let the Jacobs team know what they need to get designed first and what they need, what they can design later. So that if we have windows of opportunity to install some of this stuff, we can. And that's, that, that's key. There's a lot of the, there's a lot of the pre procurement now is dead on. The, the ozone system is a 12 to 14 month lead time item. So this, this, this project, your project with the water treatment plant has a lot of scheduling nuances associated with it that I, I think you need a contractor onboard that can work those issues out and keep the team informed of, of a lot of those elements. And yes, there's a lot of V E stuff that we've, we've been through the process and we get. And we can give Jacobs a heads up on it so we don't go down a blind alley again. And I guess to reinforce, I think something that was brought up by Bob Gowing built into our contract. If, if, you know, if you want to quote unquote, keep us honest, built into our contract is there is a provision where a third party estimate estimator can come onboard and double check our estimates. You know, we give them our, we give them the quotes that we get, we get and they, they go off and they do their own estimate on their own. And then we compare the two and we come to an equitable guarantee maximum price. And that's, that's basically your, your insurance policy, I guess, is that you're keeping somebody honest.
Thanks, Jim. I appreciate that. And I don't, don't take my, my statements the wrong way. But I was involved in this from pretty much day one. So I am, I'm very cautious. But I always had the suspicion that the issues weren't with the contractor. It was somebody else. So but thank you for, you know, coming on the meeting tonight and talking to us about, you know, your perspective on that. I appreciate that.
Thank you for that statement. I've got an extremely thick skin and there's no way I could have survived this four or five year process without it. So I, I, I get where you're coming from and I respect the fact that at the end of the day, you gotta, you gotta justify this whole process to the right payers.
Thank you, John. Any other trustees would like to weigh in on any questions? It's a good time.
I had a follow up question, but
Yep, Kenny's here.
Well, can we let Rebecca go first?
Hi, yeah, I have a couple of comments more so. My concern, I appreciate the presentation. Thank you very much. My concern is around those interim projects that you mentioned. So just from the board standpoint, we make sure that we pursue as many of those as possible. I mean, I feel like that's a huge priority. Secondly, regarding risk assessment, when we're expanding our existing facilities and the risks associated with its existing function, that's, that's my major concern. And I'm curious how we can manage that risk and understand exactly what the concerns or questions might be. Because that would be catastrophic, of course. I mean, I think everybody here understands that if we were to affect our current functioning water treatment plant, what that would mean to the people of Wellington. So I am curious about any extra effort, staff, communication surrounding the risks associated with the current function as we move forward on this. And I know a lot of these are projects related and this assessment may not occur or we may not have those details until later in the process. But I just want to make sure we highlight that early in advance, that that's going to be very important for me to manage and understand as we're going through the process moving forward. That's it. Just a couple of comments.
Well, Bob, do you mind if I address that?
Go ahead, Mike.
So trustee Kenny, with 30 years in operations and treatment, I'm going to put my, my total reliance on the Jacobs team. I don't see any interruption. From what I've seen so far, these guys have really went to work. They've done their homework. They know what they're doing. I would hope that you would trust that there will be no disruption in operations during construction of this new facility. We can sit down and talk about details, but, but I'm not the expert. The Jacob team is the expert. So yeah, please feel free to throw out any questions you would like.
Okay. Thank you for that reassurance, Mike. But I think that the idea behind Jacobs is actually their design is to will actually thwart any disruption. Stand tech was all about disruption. So that's one benefit to this alternate design. That's how I understand it. Till you get to the design itself, we won't know.
You know, you know, Mr. Mayor, I consider myself the town citizenist. And I think I'm pretty much annoyed Bob being so, but I look at every angle and, and I'm really confident what Jacobs is doing, sir.
And I, I think just, this is Bob again, just to add to that, we've, we've got a much more capable staff, frankly, than when we started the, the previous version of this project. We've got professional engineers. We've got very qualified superintendents in both utilities. So this project will get a lot more oversight from staff right from the get go. Far more than what was applied originally. And that's, that's not to say that, that the folks that were handling back then were capable. They were. But we just have a little bit more right now in terms of experienced folks who have experience with this very kind of project.
Fair enough. Other trustees?
I have some comments. Can I? So Rebecca, to, to answer what you, initially the stand tech project was going to try to renovate the plant while we're using it. I think the current one is we're, I think the current plans and someone who knows more, correct me if I'm wrong. But I think they're going to build an entire new plant. Then bring that online and then maybe even rent do some renovations. So I don't think they're going to try to build on top of the existing, which should eliminate some of the risk. I was a little uncomfortable with that. I did have a couple of questions, one for Bob and the other one I'll direct to the Jacobs team. I'm really interested in the interim capacity improvements that might, if you could sort of let us know what that would mean, are we modifying, we bringing a skid in, modifying the existing treatment plan or bringing a skid in, I'd be curious to know timeframes, costs, and what kind of additional capacity might be available through the interim capacity improvements.
That's a good question. Also, we, we've kicked around a few ideas, but in general, that's included in the very first 10% of the project where we, we go through with the design team, the entire design team and staff and identify all the potential ways that it could be accelerated. And so far, you know, we've thought of four or five things. Richard can tell you a little bit about those in a minute. But we do want to have time to kind of vet those and make sure that we fully understand not only what, what the physical improvement might look like, but C D P H E's attitude towards that. And many of these things are still going to have to get permitted. So we've got to talk to C D P H E about those. And any kind of lead time items. So there's a, there's a lot of things to think about relative to that. And we, we are planning to do that at the very initial stages of design, which hopefully would happen in September.
But, but Mr. Gowing, I have another comment. I mean, they look like the 10% supposed to be August of 2020, for August 2020 start. That's not very far away. I mean, what, what, what is your evaluation? Is that a realistic goal? Because it sounds like there's a lot of things we, that, that staff would need to define. I would like to, if you could give me your thoughts on that, that would be great. Thank you.
We've asked Jacobs to already, you know, to prepare proposals. So they're, they're I probably well over halfway through that proposal, bringing that together. They've been working on that for several weeks. So right now it's our intention to, to bring a proposal, an actual proposal to the, the August 11th meeting. And our backup plans, and that's going to be tight for us, but our backup plan would be to bring it to the second meeting in August for board consideration and with a recommendation for approval. Assuming we get to that point, you know, we haven't seen the pricing yet. We haven't seen the final proposal, but that's the schedule that Jacobs is committed to and staff is also We haven't seen the final proposal, but that's the schedule that Jacobs is committed to and staff is also committed to.
Good enough. Who else?
I had a couple of questions. So one, this was a follow up on trustee Jerome's question. Would we see an impact on the timeframe if we were to consider bringing in a different contractor? Would that cause that timeframe to go up in terms of getting things accomplished?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's safe to say that.
Go ahead, Bob.
Oh, sorry, Dave. Yeah, this is Bob. It's safe to say that it would take a little bit more time and like, you know, when you add that to the fact that we're losing some hard earned knowledge and those two things argue pretty strongly against bringing in another contractor.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And there's, there's no, is there any legal requirement that requires us to consider another contractor? Or are we good to be able to just move forward as is?
We can move forward under the, under the purchasing policy that we have. Obviously it'll be the board's decision whether or not we move forward with this plan.
Okay, perfect. And then I did have a separate question. Thank you for answering that. Are, obviously we know that we, we took out the bonds to pay for the water treatment plant. Are we confident that we're going to be able to come in underneath that? Or are we going to be having to go back out to get additional financing for this project?
Well, considering that those funds were adequate for the previous version of this project and we, we do believe that with the combination of simplifying the construction, downsizing the ozone, removing the mechanical de-watering and some of the other things that we've talked about with Jacobs that relative to that project, this one should be less expensive. What we can't predict is what the, the actual purchasing environment will be at that time, you know, post COVID or maybe we're still in COVID. I don't know. But certainly this whole process includes reaching out to vendors, especially equipment suppliers early and often. And that's part of the advantage of having a, you know, approaching this with a C M A R delivery method. Jim will be all over that. Jacobs will as well. So it's, it's hard to, you know, if we were in normal times, I'd, I'd be able to give you a much more confident answer. But if we rebid, you know, the, the previous version of this project, at the same time we do this one, I'm confident that this one's going to come in less expensive.
Appreciate that. My concern is with, we just need to make sure that if, will we know that number quickly? Because if we're going to have to go back and find additional funding, that's a process that we need to start ASAP.
That is true. And we will know that in general with, with the C M A R process, we'll know that quicker than we would with a traditional design bid build. In general, we'll have that number at about 90%. The 90% is a real solid set of documents. Of course, we'll be tracking this with cost estimates as, as we go, similar to what we did with the first project with a cost estimate at 30%, 60%, 90% and 95%. So we'll be trying, you know, we'll be staying on top of the anticipated costs throughout the project. So when we get to 30%, we'll have a 30% cost estimate and granted, that didn't work very well in the previous project, if that's what you're thinking right now. But it's our intention to do a much better job with that this time around.
Good questions. Thank you all. Bob, yeah, you've got a model to, you know, to match up against from the old history. And that'd be interesting to see that each time, 10, 30, 60, 90, we all watched the evolution of it. We're going to watch it again this time. I really like the fact that, uh, I like the fact of what the team is doing. So I, I, I'm, I'm pretty confident what's going on is better than what we had. So, uh, but that being said, there's nothing else. Richard and the Jacobs team, I appreciate our own team. Very nice job. If there's nothing else, team, I'd like to move on.
All right, Mr. Mayor, ready?
Yeah, go ahead, Kelly.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. Tonight I'm filling in for Ms. Woodruff, our HR Director. Before we get started, I think the question has been asked of what is our historic staffing level look like to date? So just to quickly review, this is taken from the 2022 budget. So between 2018 to 2019, we added 6.25 F T E, which stands for full time employees. And then between 2019 to 2020, we added three positions. And I know a lot has varied within 2020, but this is what was included in your budget. So you saw some information in your packet and I just wanted to clarify as it may look a bit deceiving. So what we're really requesting is three new positions for 2020. So this would include the Deputy Public Works Director, a Civil Engineer One, and the HR Generalist. There are 2.3 positions that are either a replacement or a position upgrade. So that would include your Parks and Rec Director, and I'll get into all the details about these position in the next slide, a Management Analyst and Accounts Payable. And then there are two positions that could be, that they're currently contracted out and we're going to have to do our own evaluation on these in the next couple of months and even next year on whether that we want to in-house Building Inspector and IT Technician. So for the positions that I've listed, I'll go over each one. So for the Deputy Public Works Director, that would be a new position. This would focus on operations and managing various groups and developing programs even further. This is a high level strategic thinking position that would also assist with the board's strategic plan items, which was listed as improved and sustained infrastructure. And I know that's a top priority, even from your last presentation. We know we have a lot of infrastructure related projects that are top priority for the community. So that would free up Mr. Gowing's time and also allow for us to really focus in on that utility operations that are so critical to the key functions of our community. The Civil Engineer One would also be a new position. This person would assist as, with the other project managers that we have and also take over the drainage review process. This would be more of a junior position and we would also look for someone that might have G I S skills that we could bring that a little bit more in house. So that's another potential cost saving opportunity for us. And then another new position would be the HR Generalist. We currently have enough work to support HR with two positions total. We would like to move payroll into the HR Generalist position and free up time for our purchasing and grants position, which could also result in cost saving if our grants administrator is able to really focus in and bring in additional dollars to the town. This would also assist with the benefits administration, workers compensation claims, property casualty insurance, and the recruitment process that we go through. Our next group of positions are replacements of existing positions. So there's been some turnover on our staff and there's also opportunities that we can more streamline what we're doing currently. So the Parks and Rec Director position, this is an existing position labeled as a Recreation Manager. We believe that there is efficiencies to be had by upgrading this position to Parks and Rec Director. Currently, they're, they're too siloed off. Parks is actively listed under the Public Works Department and this would be a change. There's a lot of process improvements and efficiency if they're both working hand in hand. And you'll probably notice other communities have a very similar position. So this would just be a slightly upgraded position to what it is now and we would go out and recruit for that. Since we do have a temporary vacancy and temporary staffing in that role. Also, the Management Analyst, we've had currently an intern on our staff during the, the influx of work that we've had to take on being short staffed. And we realize this position has been very critical to assist all of our various departments. It's kind of your catchall for, you know, doing research, project management, and ultimately implementation of projects that we have coming about. Accounts payable, this is just adding a point three F T E to the current position that we have. So just upgrading that. As the additional work in the projects that we have have increased, also the volume of accounts payable has also increased. So this is just a minor adjustment to that position to make it a full time F T E. And then the two positions next, IT Technician, that we, we currently have a contract with Luwan, who is doing a variety of our IT services. That contract can be scaled up or down at any time. We feel that it would be very beneficial to have, get some cost savings back from that contract to have an in-house IT technician. Just to streamline our operations, we think that we could save money. We're looking at that contract to bring that piece of it in-house. And this would create faster turnaround times for our staff to be able to operate more efficient and effectively. And then the Building Inspector position, this has been talked about with the Board of Trustees, I believe, over the last couple of years. We currently have SafeBuild that's performing these duties for us. So this might not be technically in housing this. This is something that Mr. Bird and his team would look at in 2021, knowing that we already have funding set aside for the Building Inspector official through SafeBuild. So what we might look at is, is there's, if there's a potential opportunity to find another firm locally that provides that services, maybe at a cheaper cost, or if it's cheaper to in-house that service. And I know that the board's talked about that. So in general, just wanted to outline it so it didn't seem like this was 7.3 complete new position request, more of adjustments, knowing that what we need to do is be efficient and effective with our town resources. Are there any questions?
Anyone got any questions right off the bat?
I wanted to clarify, Ms. Hodling, the Deputy Public Works Director, would that, would that person specifically be focusing more on the board's strategic objectives or may be freeing up time for Mr. Gowing to allow him to focus more on the strategic objectives?
It, it, it would be both. So those, Mr. Gowing and that deputy would work hand in hand on the strategic objectives. So this deputy position would be more focused on utilities and, and our operation side of things.
And then on the Parks and Recreation, as well as the Management Analyst that are both listed as 1.0s, although you're saying they're an upgrade, is that is how, is it an upgrade of 1.0 or is it upgrading from something else to 1.0? I was a little confused on exactly what's changing in terms of those.
So it would be, it's not a new position. We currently have that position. So it's, it's a bit of a wash in terms of your full time employee count. So we currently have an intern that, that intern would go away, but we would create the Management Analyst position. Your Recreation Manager would go away, but we would create the Parks and Recreation Director. So it's just upgrading in a sense, or I don't want to use the promotion because that assumes that that incumbent would have, temporary incumbents would have that. But so it's just trying to be more effective with our resources that we have. So it's not, it's not any new F T E.
Okay.
Too total essentially. So.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Anyone else? Kelly, I got a question then. Are you going to pull up your chart pretty soon or no?
I could, the Excel table?
Well, the, the organizational chart, I just wanted to.
Oh, okay.
Make sure our, our number, by reading this right, each one of these is a position in the staff that I'm, that I'm looking at here. And I, you know, I know some of them say 2021 and 2022, right? That's projected positions down the road. That's not what you're talking about for 2020 right now, right?
We just included 2022 as we're trying to, you know, look out further at what could be the potential needs. Things change month to month as we know. So those, those positions in 2022 might not be the highest and best use of our resources. So we just wanted to have a complete catchall that you, that you get, get a good sense of what we currently have, what we're proposing, and then the out year of 2022.
Well, am I, am I correct? By 2022, according to the chart, by looking at 65?
I, I don't have that number in front of me. My apologies, but I'd have to count to make sure that those were correctly counted.
I just want to make sure I'm counting right. I didn't know if they're temporary or part time. Is that what you got here, you know?
Yeah. And, and that's what I don't know is, you know, which ones are, you know, point five F T Es. And so you can't necessarily count box equals one full time employee.
That's, that's what I was getting at. That, that's what I was getting at is each box might not be a one. All right, all right.
Yes.
It makes sense because if I counted every one of these as a full higher than, it's a little different than what we listed. Okay. Questions?
I did have another question, Ms. Hodling, in regards to the addition of those three positions and I can see the value behind those. But looking especially the Deputy Public Works Director, Civil Engineer One, neither one of those strike me as some low cost positions. I imagine you're going to have to pay fairly well to have those positions come in. Do we have a way, because we're already looking at, we're in a strained budget situation now, especially with, within public works and water and things like that. Do we have a plan as far as how we're going to be able to afford these positions? And really my concern comes from a standpoint of we're, we're already in a rough position with utilities and with relying a lot on new development. So it is a little concerning. How can we, do we have a plan to figure out how we can add these positions without adding to the burden that we're trying to deal with right now?
Sure. This is just the first step in our budget review process. We felt that it was appropriate to, to give you the first cut of personnel. Our next step would be the capital improvement project list and then we'll wrap up with the operational's budget. So this is just, tonight's just the first cut of this. And so as we get closer to wrapping up the budget in December, you're really going to be able to see with Tyler and the team of, all right, can, can we afford this? Or is this something that we need to kick to a future year? And then looking at, you know, what C I P projects are coming in the door and what we're doing with operations. So you will get a more holistic picture tonight is just first introduction to what we're thinking. We didn't want to throw personnel in at the very end and then it feels very disingenuous, but we wanted to be very transparent through this process. So yes, Mr. Geter, you will get more information as we progress through this process.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate you being very upfront and giving this out to us. And I, I, I do see a lot of value, especially we have good staff here. I want to make sure we're not overworking them. So if this will help make Mr. Gowing's life a little bit easier, I'm all for that as well as our other staff. So that's good to hear. Then we'll get more information. Thank you.
Anyone else in the comments? Okay, Kelly, we look forward to seeing how we're going to progress with this. Thanks for putting it together.
Thank you.
What do we got next here? We got a, we got a discussion on our Economic Development Services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll go, I'll go ahead and kick off the next presentation. So in your packet tonight, you'll see a proposal from Ares for Economic Development Services. So a quick background is we did have this position in-house due to, you know, a vacancy in this position. And knowing the current environment of the unknowns of when a town administrator will begin, we felt it would be appropriate to provide services that could be provided through the end of the year. So within their proposal, they listed two different tasks that they could perform. The first one being Economic Development Plan and Policy. So this is very similar to the Strategic Plan of Economic Development of what the board had talked about in the budget in 2022. So Ares would be able to provide economic development goals and work very closely with the Board of Trustees to get a better understanding on what our top priorities are. This would also give direction to staff on what those priorities are and provide any tools of implementation. So the focus would be on recruitment, retention, retaining those current employer base that we have. So working on that strategic plan would be accomplished, they said, if we signed with them could be done in 30 to 45 days. So you would have a deliverable at that point so we can move on to the next steps. Task two would be the managing kind of the, the day to day contract of the town and Economic Development Services on the behalf of Wellington. So what that would look like is similar to what that position in-house would be is fostering those late relationships with our current businesses, attending any meetings that would be necessary with the Chamber of Commerce or Main Street, and then regional events as well. The details of the contract, so this is just, just temporary. So it's more of a trial period to get us through because if the board or the new town administrator decides to bring an in-house person back, that still gives us the flexibility. We're not locked into a long term contract with them. The cost for task one, which is more of that strategic plan. The cost for task one, which is more of that strategic plan is about $15,000, which is a one-time cost. And then task two, which is the day-to-day operations at a monthly cost of $5,500 monthly. Our funding source for this position. Or this proposal is the funding salary for the Economic Development Manager. We do have the salary savings. And you can see the monthly salary plus benefits costs that we have for them. I'll open it up for discussion from the Board.
Board members.
I had a question, Ms. Hodeling. So this, would this, these services be different than like what we were getting from Buxton? Or could you maybe speak to that, how, how this is differentiated from the last firm we, we had on board, please?
Sure. Thank you, Trustee Whitehouse. This is different than what Buxton provided you. Buxton gave, my understanding was. More of a limited scope. And so all they did was kind of cast the wide net of what businesses in theory might be interested in Wellington. And then gives you the list of the, the contact information. So that's a very limited scope in nature. This would be. The strategic plan and then also the monthly services that an in-house staff person would be required to provide to our businesses.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My question is, yeah, my question is regarding the actual time commitment. So we're looking at comparing, comparing a full-time 40 hours a week position versus what is the expectation with Aries?
I believe in the proposal for the monthly operations, it's 40 hours per month.
Does that, did I answer the question?
Yeah, it does. It's alarming. I think these are services are important, but my other question is. Knowing that they aren't in Wellington, for that time, will we have any kind of commitment or need for them to be here in person? Or is this all, is this all remote kind of work?
Well, with COVID, it's a little bit difficult, but yes.
I know. It might not even matter in that case.
Yeah, in between now and December, it, it may not matter, but yes, if they're required to attend meetings. They, they would, you know, that would be the expectation. So just depending on, on what is needed. They, they would provide that, so.
Okay. Thank you for this information. I'm really glad that we're pursuing some options. So I appreciate it.
So, so anyone else?
Yeah, I did. I had a question with this tier or stage one of the strategic plan that they're working on. Would this be going back and redoing? Work that we already have from our previous Economic Development Director, or would this be completely new? Information and work that we have not approached or done?
You know, I wouldn't be able to speak to what the deliverables were for our previous incumbent. I, I don't believe I ever received a copy of what was achieved at that point. But if, if there's anything that we have to date, of course, we'll build upon that. We've got the information from Buxton. And so that, you know, we're not going to recreate the real. But we don't currently have a plan in place for the policy of economic development moving forward. So. That's something that's still hanging out there that the Board never have the opportunity to discuss.
So I definitely see the value of having someone to handle things. I guess the question I have. And maybe the other board members can chime in is the thought process of having someone that is. Regardless of how it's going to be, it's going to be here on a temporary solution that's doing this, this plan and putting together this plan. That we're then going to bring somebody else in in six months. That may say, well, we're scrapping all that and redoing it all again. That's a little bit of my concern is. Or would that be something that we would just bring a new person in and they would be willing to move forward with that? Or do we just say, let's have someone work on this monthly? And then when we do hire a full-time Economic Development Director in six months, we do that strategic plan? Or do we need that strategic plan? Now, I, I don't know the answer. So I guess that's just a question I have. If any other board members have thoughts, that's a little bit of my concern is. Paying someone to do a project, but then we're knowing we're in six months, we're going to have somebody completely new coming in that may rework everything.
Well, I look at it as that's the risk that you take anytime you replace a position, no matter what. I mean. You know, if we end up hiring a new economic development, you know, person down the road. I would hope that the new person would be, have more economic development. Background and better plans. And obviously they would probably go in a completely different direction than where we've been taken to this point. So. You know, just like the hiring a new town administrator, I mean. You know, Kelly's doing all this work and her staff is doing all this work for staffing levels. We always run that risk that, you know, a new administrator has a different vision and can make a good case for their vision. And we move in that direction. So, you know, at this point, I guess the bottom line would be is do we as a board feel that we. Are lacking and needing economic development in this environment that we're operating in right now, namely COVID? And if we do, this is a good interim solution because I don't, you know. Any, any type of job searches, you know, as we know, as we're looking at different positions right now, take a lot of time. So. You know, if we feel there's a dire need for something right now, here's a good solution right in front of us that we're not locked into. We've already got the, the, the money has been budgeted for that particular position. Obviously, we'd have to reappropriate it for a contractual use, but. I mean, that's the way I'm looking at it right now.
I have to be, trustee Drom too. Because I do think, I think it is a dire need and I think it is really important. And I think this might be the only way that we could. Proceed in the fastest way possible. And just knowing the firm and the background of it, I think it's, it's good to know they serve other Northern Colorado communities as well. But I think there's a lot of benefits there. Sorry, sorry, trustee Whitehouse.
Hey, Tim, you got something?
Yeah, I had a comment. I had a, a conversation with Ms. Hodeling, I don't know, a week or two ago in our weekly call. And, you know, one of the questions she raised, and I think it might be something of value for the Board in general to think about is. You know, would an interim or contractual. Economic developer, you know, the, the, this team that would provide these services, does that make more sense? Or does it make sense to actually have an in-house employee? And I think that's a reasonable question to evaluate. And I don't know that we did a very good job. I mean, they kind of went out and got an EDM. And I, I think that may be something reasonable to discuss whether, you know, what is the best, at this point, what is the best way to fulfill? The, this job description. So that's just my two cents on that.
Okay, let me follow up with it all if everybody else is done. How much money we got left in our budget, Kelly, for the rest of the year for this?
I would defer to our Finance Director, Mr. Sexton, for that question. We can get you exact numbers, but.
No, I don't need them. There's some money left over, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. And they're going to charge us 5,000 a month, right? Base rate. And at least we get something going. And keep the pressure up until we can have our meetings and talk about our budgets. And then we can see if we get any benefit out of errors until then. Then we can regroup with an in-house or keep going. I mean, we got, we'll have a little time there to maybe hopefully analyze some successes. I would think. And then we can regroup, whether it makes sense to go forward with these guys month to month or whatever the contract says and, or do another in-house. We just, it's nice to keep the pressure up though. I think we need to do that. No other town is stopping the pressure just because of COVID. It might, it, it might be hindered, that's for sure, but they're still trying. We got to still stay alive and keep up the fight. So I, I, I afford doing something. If this is a quick get, get along and, and I think anybody you bring on will always use what and build upon what we have. That would be any smart person coming in will use what's been done and make it their own. That's where I'm at with it. I don't know what, I don't know what the next step is.
So I appreciate you guys sharing it. That does help allay some of my concerns. So thank you, members of the Board for sharing. I would feel confident. I think it is a good idea. I agree. We need, we do need to be moving forward. A question is the 5,000, is that fixed or is that based on how many hours they're planning to spend? And are those guaranteed hours that they will spend or is that fluctuate up and down based on what's going on?
That would be based on their workload. So they're, they're saying that they have 40 hours to give us. But if they didn't put in 40 hours, we would not sign off on that position, so.
Great. I just want to make sure like if, you know, if we end up only having 20 hours worth of work that needs to happen, I don't want to be paying them for 40. So, okay, great.
Yeah. And then they've done that, you know, based on relationships that they have with other communities, you know, in interviewing them, they said. You know, some months if it's, we've only got 10 hours worth of work, then we'll bill you for 10. But if something kind of the best opportunity in the world came up, that unicorn opportunity. And if it needs 60 hours and if the Board gives the pre-authorization on that 60 hours to exceed. Then they would go ahead and do that. So it's something that, just like any other contract that we manage, we're very closely monitoring the ups and downs of each month.
Perfect. That, that, I'm good with that. Thank you.
I, I do have one final question myself in this subject. Obviously, this is just a discussion at the work session. If we were to move ahead with this. What is, do, do, do you have a timeline for if we were going to go this direction?
If the Board felt comfortable moving forward tonight, if I see enough head nods. I would propose bringing this back at our, our next meeting, which would be next week. Assuming if, if they're able to get more of a formal contract together, it's something beefier than this proposal.
Thank you.
So what do you need a thumbs up to go forward? Kelly, is that what you're looking for?
That, that, or just verbal or whatever you prefer to do. I see.
I'm good with seeing us in the next board meeting.
Let's see it at the next board meeting.
All right.
Have a look.
I am as well. Thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, I got kicked off.
Here, I see you.
Well, I can't see you guys. That's okay.
We can see you, so be careful.
I guess we're moving on to item five, raw water, cash and new up. I'll try to find out what happened to my computer here.
This is Bob Gowing, Public Works Director. We have, I think we have Cody on the line here also. So he's probably going to chime in at some point. We wanted to present to you kind of a, the outlines of a method of calculating. The raw water dedication and/or raw water fee and lieu moving forward with development. So I'm going to share my screen. So, can you guys see this?
Yep.
Okay. So in general, you know, we did some research on this. We looked at other water districts and other municipalities. And not surprising, nobody does this the same way. For Collins has a very elaborate. Formula with number of bedrooms and square footage of house. Other districts just flat out have a rate and that's it. So we. Got together and thought that what we'd like to do is, is something a little bit more rational than what we have right now. So I'm just going to walk you through this real quick. So this is for residential. And this would be for a typical single-family house. So for indoor use, and, and the basis of this is to separate out the calculation for indoor use from outdoor use. So indoor use. Is, and this is a pretty typical approach with utilities. You basically just set a value based on typical residential customers in our, in our utility. So we need to do that research. Those numbers typically range from. Point three, six or seven to point five. I put in a point four for this presentation, but this is a number that we would still need to vet a little bit based on actual data. So indoor use. Kind of our assumptions and our method is that the raw water requirement. Would be based on the average indoor use for typical residential customers where. The market value is the, of a North Pooter share is the future value. In three years, based on two years of historic data to create an inflationary rate for that. So real quick, the calculations, that's just point four acre feet. That comes out to one point or 0.16 shares of North Pooter. Those shares, that percentage of a share at the current rate, I'm going to take you out here. These are calculations that are in support of this. You can see there's the current market value and up here in the input, we've. Got in 2018 about 140,000 a share, 2019, 170, and this year it's running about, about 200,000. So if you. If you take kind of an inflation rate off of that, if you calculate that inflation rate, it's about 21%. So carrying that out three years, kind of, you know, annually accruing that. We get down here to a year three market value of $360,000 for that, at that inflation rate. It's a. It's a remarkable amount and one could argue that the last few years aren't representative. But one could also argue that they are because they happened. So using that 360,000 as kind of the future market value for one share. And the reason we picked three is obviously because we can't just go to the corner store and buy one of these shares. They have to become available and we have to, you know, basically bid for them. So. There are some carry time and we're trying to reflect that carry time. So three years might be the right number, two years might be the right number two. But I base this little example of this methodology on the three-year number. So you come back over here to the calculations for indoor use and that point one six share. Is basically priced at 57,000 based on that assumption. That we're buying it three years from now at a 21.4% inflation rate. I would note that, you know, right now that point one six share is $32,000. At the $200,000 market value currently. So. So the question of whether or not we are even going to take fee and lieu, I think we're. You know, we've, we've had, we've had a number of discussions about this. Perhaps we take half the water in, in wet water and half of it in fee and lieu. Perhaps for residential, we require all shares. So not really trying to answer that question tonight, but simply show, you know, giving you some information to frame that question. Or hopefully the answer to that question. So if they go out and buy today, it's 32,000. In three years, we project it'll be 57,000. Outdoor use is a little bit more involved. Going back up here to the input detail, I'll say. A typical single-family home in Wellington, lot size 6,500, that's, I believe, the minimum lot size. And most of them come in close to the minimum. So I went ahead and used the minimum for this. With a 1,400 square foot building and a 400 square foot driveway. So. This assumes that the landscaping is the building footprint. Or rather the lot size minus the building footprint, minus the paved access and parking, parking areas. The annual irrigation demand is based on a application rate of water. And the number that we're using in this, this little example analysis is 26 inches a year of additional irrigation that's required. And this number can vary a little bit, but most of the numbers that I looked at from. Landscapers and sod providers and even other utilities hovered right around 26 inches. Required to keep Kentucky Bluegrass yard healthy and green. So without, you know, getting into the. So without, you know, getting into the, to the brownness of the, of the yard type of leasing, that's probably a safe assumption. So assuming that that rate, that application rate is applied to that forty-seven hundred square feet, which is the, the landscape area, we come up with point two-three acre feet a year as irrigation demand for those assumptions. Now, I can go up here and change this. A ten thousand square foot house, and you can see that that jumps up quite a bit. So the idea is that this would enable us to kind of hone in on a typical house or even specific houses potentially. So using that same methodology in terms of the market value of the raw water. And by the way, that two point two-three comes out to point oh nine four North Pooter shares. That's about eighteen eight at the current market value and thirty-three and a half at the inflated value. So to summarize that, a single-family house with a non-pot irrigation system would be looking at a fee and lieu of of that, sorry. And that's thirty-two thousand at current market value, and a single family without non-pot would be looking at something like that for fee and lieu. Those are big numbers. And they're pretty much a function of this right out here. The incredible inflation rate that North Pooters experiencing right now. So that's some data and kind of a typical analysis. And we wanted to, at this point, kind of present that to you and get your thoughts on this type of approach, but also any other thoughts you may have on this topic.
Can you tell me, Mr. Gowing, in regards to what that would be currently, right? So in regards to what our current system that we have set up is, what is different?
Currently.
Hey, Bob, this is Cody. Can I chime in real quick?
Sure, go ahead.
I'll take a stab at this too. And Bob did a really great job providing some really good detail. I want to take one step back and provide just a little bit of context framework that I think will help answer the question. So the town last updated its, its cash for, or cash and lieu water policy in two thousand seventeen, April. At that time, though, the cash price was based on the price of a CBT share at twenty-seven thousand dollars. And of course, the rates have increased dramatically. And currently, as of March twenty twenty, the CBT share price was estimated at fifty thousand, so nearly double. And of course, North Pooter stock certificates have climbed in a similar fashion. So the, yeah, as Bob's highlighting there, certainly that, that value continues to climb, which is why we really suggest we need to, at a minimum, update the, the cash price, the rate at which we charge for raw water, just to be reflecting the current market value. As, as Bob had mentioned, there's a number of other considerations that we should also take a look at. And those may happen sooner or they may happen later, depending on direction from the board. But the question that was brought up was, what have we done in the past? And historically, we have only accepted cash for, for all of our raw water dedications. And that isn't necessarily the best strategy. Water doesn't provide, or I'm sorry, money doesn't provide water. And so what we would propose is to start requiring the, the shares to be dedicated, which is what our ordinance actually says, and that we may accept cash. We just have always accepted cash because it's been convenient for development. We'd like to change that policy consideration.
So trustee Gator, the, what we're charging right now is considerably lower than this, based on the, the way we got here that Cody just described. Right now, we're requiring a half an acre foot per residence, and you can see that these two add up to a little bit more, point five-five acre feet. So a slight increase in, in just the amount of water. But the, kind of the cost per acre foot is going up substantially based on current information.
So am I correct in understanding that if we were to start utilizing this method, this is a fluctuating pricing structure? So this would change throughout the years as our price of water changes, correct?
It certainly has the potential to do that, yes. And with, with the, you have the change in water prices, I think we'd be looking at kind of an annual update to this.
Would we want to wait to do annually? I mean, at the, at the rate that we've seen the shares going up, it's been, you know, every three or four months, there's a, seems to be a change in pricing. I don't know if every six months or, I mean, I guess we'd have to just kind of monitor what's going on with those prices because we could easily get back behind the eight ball again if we wait for a year and there's a surge in, in stock pricing again. So I, I guess I would think, I would want to look at it. We, we evaluate it on a more regular basis until we actually see stabilization. You know, I guess if we go a whole year and the stock prices hasn't, hasn't fluctuated much, then we could maybe consider that. But at this point in time, I mean, we all know that we've gone down this road several times in one year and, and last year, for example, I mean, I think we bought shares at least a couple different times, and there was, you know, a big change between the two different times we purchased. So I would be more comfortable, if we're going to step this up and, and try to keep with the market value, then we need to evaluate it on a more regular basis, I guess, is my thoughts on it.
Trustee Jerome, this is Brad March. One of the things that the, the North Pooter contract we have does is that, as you know, includes a component for the cost of North Pooter, as always has been said. You could probably get North Pooter to give us their sales on, say, a quarterly basis even, and say that the staff should, needs to evaluate that and bring it back to the board more regularly than annually, if that's what you want to see.
I think, I think we need to at least initially do that. Like I said, we may see stabilization in the stock prices down the road, but I don't think they're very stable right now. I mean, I, I would just, you know, if we're going to go through all this work and we're going to go ahead and, you know, up these prices so dramatically that we need to at least keep up with the, with, with what we're doing and make sure it's always as up to date as possible. So, I mean, quarterly, every six months, you know, I, I don't know the, the good answer to that. I know that doing evaluations becomes a tedious job, but in order for us to keep up to date and, you know, keep charging the, the correct amount that we should be getting, then I think we need to at least initially, you know, review it more often. And then, like I said, as we see a stabilization where the prices aren't jumping, you know, over a year's tur, you know, period by ten or fifteen percent, then maybe we rethink that. But I just would hate for us to, you know, go through the process of changing this to base it off a market value and then evaluate it a year from now, and it's jumped another twenty percent. And it did that right after we did this, this move and we missed out on that money. So that's my only thoughts on it.
Yeah, I had a question. I'm looking at the ordinance. It says that, and maybe someone correct me, that it says ninety-eight hundred dollars in cash lieu of raw water fee. Is that current?
Which ordinance are you, are you referring to?
That's a twenty seventeen. Mr. Bird, yeah, I'm looking at the one that is, this is like the third revision from, I think I see a date of two thousand seventeen on it. And I was just trying to figure out if, if that number, the fifty, the ninety-eight fifty was, is that current?
So Mr. Whitehouse, the, the current ordinance, the, the rate that the town currently enforces is ordinance six dash twenty seventeen. That was adopted in April of seventeen. That, that particular ordinance that set that rate established the point five acre foot requirement per household based on the Colorado Big Thompson share price of twenty-seven thousand. So you double that, and it came out to thirty-eight, five seventy-one per acre foot. That's the equivalent of nineteen thousand, two hundred eighty-five fifty per house for the cash price for raw water. And that's what we're currently assessing.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Board members?
So do you have another question?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Trustee Kenny, I'll let you go first.
I just want to get clarification. Is the recommendation right now from staff is to eliminate the fee and lieu, or it is just to change the price and keep the current process where we accept shares or?
Great question.
Yeah, go ahead, Cody.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Kenny, that's a, that's a great question. And when I look at this, there's, there's a number of factors that the board needs to take a look at, and staff can do whatever research is necessary to get you the information that you need. I look at this, there, there's a couple of policy considerations. The first of which we want to deal with fairly quickly is just, is it okay to increase the fee to reflect current market rates? That's a pretty simple question, and it's a pretty simple calculation that Bob has already started to prepare, that we could do that. Some other policy considerations are, you know, whether we're charging a different rate for potable versus non-potable subdivisions. There's factors such as, are we going to require a separate irrigation tap if they're using town water to irrigate outdoors? Do we want to establish a base rate that's different for, for different types of uses? And of course, the timing, do we require dedication at the time of building permit, which is the current policy? Or do we require dedication of shares or, or portions of dedication and annexation or subdivision plat? There's a lot of moving components that we can look at in a water policy. But I think the, the proposal that we would like to, to kind of bring back to you in a pretty, pretty quick fashion is to address the fees. And we think that through the calculations, similar to what Bob has shared, we think we can do that pretty quickly and get that in front of the board.
Okay. It sounds like multiple phases. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Brad.
No, if I might add to that, one, one of the reasons for that is, is one of the things you're finding is, is it is extremely difficult to find these shares. And, and so if development's going to continue, the town may need to go out and find blocks of shares, which the town has done in the past. But it's, it's, it's hard to, it's going to be hard to keep up with this. And so at least at current, we need to find a different cash and lieu, even if we don't allow it.
Yeah, or more aggressively pursue shares from the town perspective based on the increase in fees.
Fair enough. And, and that may be, if we can.
Excuse me.
I have a comment. I, I do think that we need to look at this in a, a big picture way. And certainly if we're subsidizing this water and how we, how it gets supplied and the timeframe it gets supplied over, I think this is, would be a critical thing that we, you know, get resolved and as, I would say, as soon as possible. Because again, we are definitely having some water issues here in town, and I think this is a component of a much bigger ball of wax that we really have to look at in the big picture.
Anyone else want to weigh in?
Yeah, so Mr. Bird, what impact would raising these rates have on development? Would that slow things down or would that not really make much of a change at all?
You know, I'll get out my crystal ball. I know you can't see it either.
I know.
But it's, it's a great question. It's one that, that we, staff has been scratching our heads too. The general wisdom that we can share is that we do think that particularly if they're as dramatic as we think that they need to be to reflect the current market, that will have a natural slowing process. On the other hand, we know that the front range here is a very hot market, and the building is continuing despite COVID. Numbers have picked up. And so we know that there is high demand here. So I don't think that, I think it will have a temporary dip in the demand, but it may come back strong. I think that the other, the other very real impact that we would be looking at making these changes is there's a timing component that a lot of the builders have, have expressed concerns to me and to Bob and to others, that when they're making a contract for a house, they're telling the homeowner, this is the, the price that we're going to charge you for delivering the home. And if we change those fees after those contracts are in place, they're either going back and telling that homeowner, hey, you're, the price of your home just increased dramatically, or they're eating that cost. And we can, you know, pontificate all day long whether, which one is the right way to go. But that is a very real struggle that we have to kind of contend with. The last comment I would make, overall, when we raise water rates, one of the things that we have to be aware of is that has a very direct impact on affordability of our homes. If you look at kind of one of the more extreme examples where, you know, kind of the bottom line that Bob has shared there for the, a single-family home without non-potable irrigation with the inflation factors included, ninety thousand dollars. That's, that's a seventy thousand dollar increase over our current water rate, and that's direct cost added to the cost of a home. So those, those four hundred thousand dollar homes that are selling right now would be close to half a million dollars instantaneously. So these are all factors that we kind of have to look at, big picture, as someone else mentioned before, and what are all of the impacts? But I, I do think that this, changing the, the water fees to reflect market value is the correct thing to do for the good of the town, knowing that there are impacts on the development community and the homeowners.
Yeah, I think Cody's right. I think ultimately it all lands on the home buyers. So if we do this, it's going to impact them, which is probably going to bump us out of some of the affordable categories, which will slow the growth. So it may not so much impact the developers as it does the homeowners or home buyers.
Question regarding that, does, how does this currently apply to multifamily or higher-density housing?
That's a great question. And I'll start by referencing our current rate and policy for, for multifamily. If you, if you look at ordinance six dash twenty seventeen, it actually says that for, for any multifamily, that, that rate is negotiated and provides no basis for how to negotiate it. So we basically, staff is put in a position where the developer comes with this pretty-looking study commissioned by an engineering firm that shoots an extremely low number for their water demand, and they think, well, this is all we owe. And then it's up to our staff to try to negotiate uphill to get something that's reasonable. Moving forward, what we would really like to do is use a, a calculation method similar to what Bob has shared with you tonight. That would allow us to look at those multifamily projects on a case-by-case basis and actually calculate. There's pretty good numbers out there from the American Waterworks Association for indoor consumptive use for different housing types. And we would really like to look at a calculation factor for the exterior, for the irrigation use based on square foot of irrigated area, maybe some considerations for mulched areas versus turf versus native. There's some other factors we can look at, all policy considerations. But we would love to see a more straightforward calculated method for multifamily and commercial as well, as opposed to negotiating.
Yeah, so this really is just, it just talked about getting into the weeds. So like everything, even in guidelines for building plans and everything that has to do with landscaping, all of these items too, if we were to address those, would have some play into this conversation as well. I know during our last meeting, there was recommendations for benefits to home buyers or anybody who does zero scapeing, for example, or making that an allowable way for a business to landscape in the future. So, I mean, this has fingers and everything, right? So, but I, that's something I do want to explore more. It's regarding, you know, just more multifamily and those things. I kind of understand how that works, and I definitely agree that this should probably be based more on the calculation that's agreed upon, rather than having to do the discretion or bothering the staff to the point where they have to negotiate that every time. So I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Bird, I had a question.
Yeah, Mr. Bird, I had a question. Are there any other communities in this area who are sort of addressing the same sort of factors with, I mean, obviously there's a, certainly here, there's a shortage of available water, but are other communities dealing with the cash and lieu and in the manner or having to address, you know, this at, at this time, are you, if you're aware of that?
You know, I, Mr. Whitehouse, I'd, I'd take the first stab at that and let you know that from a planning standpoint, water is one of the topics at every conference, every meeting that we go to. Everyone is wrestling with this concept of how do we provide enough water when water is such a scarce resource? And how do we keep up with demand? Or, or do we keep up with demand? And what are the alternatives? So we, we know that this is an issue that everyone is facing. Now, on the side of what are, what are other municipalities doing with their rates? I think I would ask Bob, I think that he and his team have done more of the research on the current rates and, and practices of those other communities. So I would see if Bob had any additional input on what he's found.
Yeah, we have gathered up some, some info. I, I don't know how, it, it's relevant in the sense that it, it kind of shows our where we stand competitively with other communities. But as trustee Jerome pointed out earlier, if you're not really taking into account this incredible inflation in raw water costs, then you're kind of missing the boat. So I suspect that we're going to see similar types of, you know, almost exponential increases with other water providers as well. We did do some, some research, like I said, it's, it's all across the board. Most folks, water utilities, or rather, yeah, just water utilities providers as opposed to municipalities such as Elko, they don't have fee and lieu. They don't take fee and lieu. They require shares of wet water at plat, not at building permit. So they also ask for it significantly earlier than, than, than the town does. The Little Thompson Water District is the same way. So, so water districts tend to be a little bit more conservative, perhaps because they don't need to, to do the balancing that a community, an actual municipality has to, has to go through on something like this. But from strictly, you know, water point of view, these, these numbers are valid.
The other thing you're getting, trustee Whitehouse, Brett March. You're seeing a balanced surrounding development and, and various towns, Fort Collins is an example, has substantially greater water inventory than we've got. And so I, I, I think Bob's right. You're, you're seeing, dependent upon the user or the, the supplier, I guess, that you're seeing, they'll just take water. It's kind of all over the board. Some people I think are taking cash and lieu. Richard Seaworth sent me something today that suggested that, that the, and this is one of the things is we've got, if we've got influences coming from outside the normal region. But Richard sent me something suggesting that Aurora was buying a hundred and nineteen shares of what's known as the Whitney Ditch, which is around Windsor and paying twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-seven million dollars to buy that. I mean, it, it, it's right. It's a huge scurry to get water. One of the issues we've got is we've got a very limited scope of what we can use to satisfy our water needs based upon our location. So.
I, I think it's probably safe to say that those communities like Fort Collins, that are still offering a fee and lieu program, are basically investing their existing water bank back into growth. And that's not a position that is tenable for us because we don't have that water bank.
That's very fair to say. Fort Collins has, and this again illustrates where it puts us. Fort Collins has limited what it will take as water. It used to take a number of various irrigation ditch stock shares. It, it took a bunch of stuff. And it, it has come back to taking predominantly North Pooter stock, which is obviously competitive as us, and CBT units. And it's, it had a major rethinking of its water, water policy a couple of years ago. That again is having an impact on us. If they just start taking North Pooter, that means there's less North Pooter and there's a higher demand, which is probably what's helped drive up the prices.
So yeah, I think that this is a good way to go about this because like my concern is, is that if we don't change anything and we remain with that lower rate, yes, we don't drive up the price of the housing, which I can understand that. And I, it's not that I'm trying to pass the burden on to the homeowners, but the challenge is I see, and this is a concern that's been raised several times by citizens, is that if we don't do anything, then that's going to come out of the town. Because we're in essence, losing money on this because we're having to go and buy water. And eventually, very shortly, we're going to run out of our funds for that. And so then that price is going to then have to somehow come back on all of the members of the community. But by doing it in this rate, I, I would think, you know, if I'm a developer, I'm going to look a lot harder at trying to bring that water in with me instead of the in lieu. If I'm paying, you know, sixty percent premium on that water potentially, you're going to be a lot more serious about bringing those water shares, or we are passing that cost on to those that are moving into the new house versus passing that cost to the other members of the community that are already here. And I think that's a concern that's been raised several times is that the members of the community aren't wanting these costs of development to be passed on to them.
Anyone else? Can I ask a few questions?
No, Troy, you can't.
Okay.
Kidding you.
I kind of like what trustee Jerome said. I'd like to look at this every six months. They go up so drastically. It could go down. We don't know.
Yeah.
We've got a three-year projection on inflation in this number right here. We don't know if that's true. What are, are, as I understand it, all new developments that are coming in this town, we're doing non-pot irrigation. Is that true? And if we're not, why wouldn't we be? And why are we not just charging shares anyway? Just bring your shares. We're not in the business of trying, we can't find them any better than anyone else. So why, why are we taking the burden of finding any shares? Bring it with you. Those kinds of questions. And then, and then Cody brought up about eight other points I need to go with this thing. So I, I guess my question is, are, are we supposed to take this and, and sit on this for a while? Study this? Is that what we're going to do? Is that, was that what, is the request is to do tonight? Is to take this and go?
I'm sorry.
What's the, what's the request?
It's really not a request. We're just presenting this methodology that we intend to adopt. And we'll be coming back to you in, in the very near future with a proposal for you to act on relative to these prices. Because this would be an ordinance change, obviously.
Seems to me, seems to me like there's quite a few more questions to really answer here. Are we going to have a chance to get those over to you, Bob or Cody?
Yeah, Bob, I'll take a stab at this first. This is Cody. I think what I would recommend is that what we've done right now is the, the research, the homework to address the, the rate, the cash and loop price, which is Mr. March pointing out earlier. We need to update the price, whether we switch to requiring shares only as, as the mayor suggested, or any other, you know, percentage policy. We need to address the cash price. The reason for that is we have a number of subdivisions, development agreements that exist that allow that fee and lieu, the cash instead of shares, that are already in existence. And so those are going to be there, but they do need to be updated to reflect the, the current market rate of, of the water shares. So the proposal from staff would be to bring to you in the very near future, a proposal, an ordinance that updates the cash price, including either the convenience fee or an inflation fee to make sure that we're keeping up with water availability. If those shares aren't available for two years and we take two hundred thousand dollars worth now and it costs four hundred thousand in two years, we didn't take enough money. So we want to make sure that we get this right on the cash price. What I would also recommend is when we bring that back to you for just the, the fees, that we would also bring back to you a, a number of other policy considerations, along with some recommendations on a direction that we could go. And whether we take those on initially in this first pass or not, we could always punt those and, and take a closer look at them. We want to at least identify those in a meaningful way and give you some recommendations on what directions we could go.
Okay, fair enough. So your intention is to try to get it back to us by, as soon as possible, the next board meeting to actually act on?
The next board meeting or the following, we would like to get it in front of you in the form of an ordinance for action.
But would it be possible to see it first before we, so we can ask some more questions, if you're, if you're figuring out some other details? I just feel like there's some gray areas here. And I know you've got, and the projected prices out there are ways.
Yeah. So point well taken, Mayor. And I know that, that the board really wants to see things. I think that was the purpose of, part of this presentation tonight was to share with you the research that we have done reflecting the, the cash prices. I think what you would likely see in a proposed ordinance would simply be, this is our proposal for how we update the cash prices. And it might be more of a calculation method like Bob has shared with you tonight.
Okay.
That's what we're recommending in the short term. The other factors that are, are all great points that need to be addressed. I don't expect that those would be reflected in the ordinance that we bring to you quickly. But rather, those might just be recommendations for future consideration. And then we bring those back at the appropriate time.
Mr. Whitehouse, I might add to that. I, I mean, the way that material gets brought before the board, certainly there's a general overview that is brought to the board in these work sessions. But, but the way that business generally gets done and the reason the staff did the work session was so they could get a proposal in front of you, which is what would happen in a board meeting. It doesn't mean it has to be adopted at the next board meeting. It may engender a great deal of discussion. But it, but it is what prompts the process to take place. And so I think what the staff has tried to do admirably is to get you somewhat of an overview. And then I think we need to get down to the meat and potatoes of adopting something. Now, now that may take some more discussion. It may need to be put off a couple of meetings. But I think the process is, is to get you the material and then let the board hash it through.
Okay.
What I would like to see for, as, from my perspective, is I'd like to add on to these. I, I like the inputs that you already have on the speculation. I think those are all applicable. So I think I really like those. But I would like to add the options for non-potable, potable, multifamily, high-density housing as potential totals on here as well. So that's what I would like to have as the additional items to what you have here. I think the way this is laid out makes complete sense to me. And the calculations are really straightforward. So I do appreciate that. But I think that would be the one piece that I would, I would want to see in addition to it.
With a caveat to that, trustee Kenny, one of the things that has happened, and if you go through various subdivisions in town, you'll see whole subdivisions that have had non-potable systems, the Knowles perhaps. Those have also included parks. You'll see other subdivisions that have had perhaps just parks. The Meadows might be one of those. You'll see other subdivisions that just have large lots served by the non-pot. As I recall, subdivision, the trustee Knutson was in with, I'm, I'm sorry, it's skipping me, but is just large lots. What probably, there's so many variables. Generally, those have been things that we provided in the ordinance that those calculations will be made at the time of a development agreement. And the assumption is, is that you're going to, as, as Mr. Bird said, you're going to bring the, the project to the town. You're going to assume that there's going to be water provided. And then you're going to negotiate from there. The, the develop, this, this says that as, if there are things in the pipeline, as Mr. Bird said, this is the number we're going to start with, that they have the ability to make contributions. So I, I think that's something we generally negotiate when the time hits. Wellington Downs, by the way, I'm sorry.
Well, I understand, I understand that's how it's done now. But I think the idea we're talking about is changing that, right? So if we are going to build it on the calculation and have to have specific inputs, so whether or not that's the lot size versus living size, the popification of multifamily versus not, I think those are additional inputs that we should consider. That's why I'm asking for that.
But let's see what we can do. I think that's going to be hard.
We have. I, and I get it. I think, and that's what I'm asking for. I mean, everything here is hard, obviously. But being able to charge a, a fair price to get to the goal that we're wanting to be at. I mean, there are assumptions that have to be made as there are in this model. I would like to see some of those applied to multifamily growing. So I mean, I'm, I'm not going to have, I'm not asking for all the answers. I would just like to see what those numbers look like now versus, as an example from something now versus what could be the case. I think that's fair. And if we're considering affordable housing, and that might be the only way to do it in relation to water prices and these that might be passed on to the customer, I'd like to see that. So I think, I think I can ask for stuff like that. I mean, we're discussing it and seeing what the board might want to see more, right? I think that's a valid question I can ask.
That's fair.
Trustee Kenny, I, I think that's, it might actually be fairly simple, but breaking indoor use out from outdoor use. This is the number for a typical three-two kind of house. They have similar numbers for multifamily. So the, you know, the smaller unit, the last, basically based on beds. So this would be a number, you know, closer to something like this perhaps, but still a large in lieu. But, you know, even if it got down as low as point two acre foot per year, it's, it's still, it's still quite large. So yes, those, to answer your question, that's, this is also, this basic technique is also applicable to all non-residential, commercial, industrial and all other types. It's just a matter of finding the indoor use. And the outdoor use is going to be fairly consistent. Whatever they're irrigating is going to be, you know, based on this formula right here. So there is, there's plenty of data that.
I'm sorry. I guess the landscape area is really the only thing that would be designed differently in mixed in multifamily versus like in a single family household. You just calculate the landscape area differently since it's shared or whatever these might be.
Right. And then hopefully that.
Anyway.
If, if I can too, this is, this is Cody Bird again. I think in some fairness, the, the concern that Mr. March brought up is valid in that we have a number of subdivisions that are already in some stage of development that don't have any calculation applied. They just have a, a flat, this was the cash price for water. And in those, rather than going back and recalculating every one of those lots and changing the game on a case by case basis for something that was already agreed upon, what we would do is update the base rate based on, if Bob can scroll up to the top of his spreadsheet, we'd have to assume for those, those subdivisions, what were the minimum lot sizes? What was the assumption that should have been used and apply that broadly across all those existing contracts? And that might be the way of addressing Brad's concern that there, there was some variability in the past. But I think we can reason through those assumptions and simply update the base cash price for those instances.
I think that was, you're right. That was my concern.
So I would just like to make the request that if possible, and I do understand that there's been some, some good questions, it sounds like trustees and the mayor have. So if possible, can we try to get those questions or requests into Mr. Galling and Mr. Bird? So that they can address those, whether it be through emails to the entire board or whatnot. I would like to be able to see something next week for us to vote on. And then obviously, we as a board can have a discussion on whether or not we're ready to approve something at that point. But I would like to see something that we can at least attempt to move forward with on this next meeting. Because I, I do see this as an opportunity where we really do need to get this fixed. But I would like to see something that we can at least attempt to move forward with on this next meeting because I I do see this as an opportunity where we really do need to get this fixed. Or we're dealing with a lot of water related issues. And this is one area where we can actually be a part of that we can start on a solution right now. So I prefer to see us put this planned for action this coming week. We can get questions answered over email or whatnot throughout this next week. And if we get to the board meeting next Tuesday and we come to an agreement that we're still not ready to vote on it, I'm fine with pushing it off to the next meeting. But I don't want to just start with that assumption that we're going to wait. I prefer to try and act on it now and then push off if we need to.
I'd like to add on to what John was just saying, trustee Gator was just saying. It's kind of a question and a statement. Do we have to change all of the fee structures at the same time? Or can we, at this point, we're looking at, it looks to me like, single family residential use, which is our highest are, you know, the most development that's happening right now is single family homes. Can we if we're okay with these calculations, can we go ahead and get that put into a a resolution form or an ordinance form and 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 vote on that next time? And then maybe at that same meeting, we can talk about the next, the next most popular type of dwellings that are being built so we can maybe take care of the the stuff that's happening right now quickly first, and then we have a little more time to deal with the stuff that's not maybe looming so soon. But I mean, we're looming with residential permits probably on a daily basis right now. So the quicker we act on this, the quicker we can implement it, the quicker we we get our fair share and we can deal with the 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 slower moving stuff, you know, incrementally. So I guess that's a question then and a statement at the same time. Is that something we could do, Cody and Bob and Brad, or do we need to handle it all at once?
You know, I'll I'll take a first stab at it. This is this is Cody. And trustee Jerome, I think you brought up a great point. It would certainly be possible for us to to break this down into component parts. I think probably the the larger challenge we get with that with with the development community is that then we're piecemealing policy to them. And that never goes over well, but it's certainly possible. I think that in my mind, updating the the cash price to kind of set that that base will address the current construction that's going on. Because a lot of our, actually, all of our development agreements just identify that cash price, and it's based on the current adopted rates of the town. So making that one change would capture the value that is is needed in the current development. Bringing other things back, the broader policy questions would certainly address future development, and we could capture those in a in a piecemeal sort of way as we work through those policy considerations.
Well, I'm okay with piecemeal, and if it gets us our fair share.
Yeah, and I think part of this, I think, is going to be really important that we take action on this as quickly as possible, especially facing water rate changes. Because it will show the, you know, the accountability that we're not just trying to seek these these monies from, you know, individuals monthly, but we're also making those changes and and doing our due diligence and so the people are asking for it from the development side too. So in my mind, if that's the way that we can do to make it happen and and show that we're taking that action, I think that would be. I mean, I'm I'm fully behind that for sure, too.
Hey, I guess that's it. We'll take action on it as soon as possible, right? That's what I'm hearing.
We will certainly get this back to you as as soon as we can. And trustee Gator, if if there are questions from from you or the other trustees, feel free to send those our way.
Okay, we'll do that. I I recommend, I've got some more things to add to this, but I'm going to get on this on the offline off of this because it's not relevant right here, right now. They need to have it. So if there's no one else to have anything more to say on this. Let's go ahead and get our questions into these guys so they get it before us on the next meeting so we can take some action. And I don't think there's anything else on our agenda. So with that being said, I got eight forty four. I'd like to say good night, everybody, and adjourn.
Thank you very much.
Good night, guys. Good meeting. Thanks for all your work.